On our June speaking schedule here, Andy. First order of business is approval of our regulars. That's on May the twentieth. So, second vote, yes. Public comment period, Brookside.
Anything on Brookside?
I think this weekend's, uh, ride sales.
Yeah.
Oyster egg, hot hog, rose, anything like that.
Where's in Hills? Uh, tree cutters came on Friday instead of Wednesday, uh, to replace that dead tree and the other things. So Chief, I appreciate you sending it out. I apologize that I gave you the wrong day, so.
But you got the wrong day though.
I got the wrong day. That's okay. I would have your place for that one, so anyway.
Also, I've had a ton of dead stuff on the other ones.
So, other than that, uh, great committee's doing fine. Everything's pretty well set. Um, and, uh, oh, which reminds me, I'm talking to you about one thing, so other than that, I have nothing else.
Captain Rabello.
I don't know of anything for you.
No, other than the resolution, the resolution for the castle.
That's coming up. We're gonna address that.
Okay. Two guest speakers tonight. Reese Spire, Reese Spire. Chief's gotta go.
Chief's gotta get to another meeting.
Well, I appreciate it very much for having me tonight. I just wanted to stop by, say hi, see how things are going with you guys. But I want to update you on two things, since I've sat in here and talked to you last time, we've added a fire, another fire prevention officer, so we have two now. So we're gonna be able to get into our buildings more often to reduce the possibilities of fires and other dangerous activities. Um, so we're very excited about that. We're already seeing some great, uh, in the Brad Reinhart's gentleman's name, so it's actually Brad and Brad, uh, who's in that office now, but, uh, we started in an area on Wilson Ridge Road just, uh, to get Brad Reinhart's feet wet. He's done very well and has done over a hundred fifty inspections in a three-month period, so we're very excited about that. You'll be seeing, uh, the two of them sometime soon in your township. Uh, the idea though is that we want to get them coming more often, so that what we do show up is not, there's not a big gap to have, um, uh, uh, things happen, because when you go less often, uh, things kind of stack up, if that makes any sense, so we, it's, if you go more often, you're able to do housekeeping and it's able to keep the, uh, major violations from building up. Um, we're very excited about that. If you guys have the meeting, he's had a great personality. He's actually one of your residents, those over on Brookside, so he's a good guy. Um, and then the other one is, uh, Nate Hall, uh, started with us part-time. He's working twenty-four hours a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And he is our service coordinator, um, and he's the one that does social checks on residents when they need somebody to come in and help find resources. Nate's background is he's got a master's degree from OSU in social work. He's a military veteran, has worked with, uh, uh, veterans himself. He has worked with veterans as well, being a veteran himself. Um, he also has done some, uh, mental health, uh, for Ohio Health, uh, been married at their hospital up there. Um, so we're very happy to have him join our team. He has already, uh, visited, um, uh, six different residents. Uh, ironically, uh, two of them were in Sharon and, uh, two of them are in Worthington, so we haven't visited anybody yet in Perry, but if you guys know somebody that needs some help, please let us know, call the firehouse, actually your office.
Well, yeah, actually, we could have used him one couple of years ago, but, yeah.
He's here now, so, yeah, he's ready to help.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is, thank you, Chief, for, first of all, bringing him on board, because it really, that is kind of a tough area for us when we have those, and it's few apart between, but when we do have them, it, it's hard making those connections, because it's not our world, so to speak.
Yep, I know a person that have been on EMS runs in the hills and in Brookside that where people just needed a little bit of extra help.
Right.
And the idea of this is, he's not gonna be providing the help. What he is, he's actually the conduit. Say if somebody needs a grass cutting service, he's not gonna cut their grass, but he has a rolodex full of people to call. If somebody needs a ride to the, to the doctor's office, he's actually, the, the six people he's visited with, he's handed out two shower chairs for people that can't stand in a shower, so it's things like that. Um, again, he doesn't go by, by the shower, too, we have people, like the Williams Resource Pantry that has items like that, that they can, um, hand out to, uh, to our residents. So, uh, we're very excited to have him on, and I jokingly say that we're gonna be, we're scratching a scab right now, and it's gonna start bleeding with more and more, probably not a good analogy, but, uh, uh, more and more, uh, people needing help, um.
Do we get, sounds kind of weird, did we get charged for a run for that?
No. No, no, so, so speaking of that, you only get charged on runs when you're transported to the hospital, not when we come visit you. So if our medics come to your house and helps somebody off the floor that's fallen, there's no charge.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yep.
So we get charged if what, two?
If you're transported to the hospital.
Oh, transported to the hospital. But if everything's under control by the time you get there, or somebody can't get up and you get up.
Need the bandage put on their elbow, there's no charge. Based on our numbers, he said that's gonna go up, I'm just, just get, well, there, there's a little bit of a spike in, in Perry, even though they're under twenty, this month through twenty-six. But, um, a lot of things happening, I don't know. But, other than that, things are going great at the firehouse. If you guys have any questions or anything, you need, for me, I'm always, my ears are always open, I'm able to help out with that, whatever you need.
Uh, July nineteenth, fireworks company is coming to do a walkthrough. Who would, uh, is it, uh, Deputy Chief?
Fokrin would be the one I would like for you to chat with, but I think that we probably need to get.
After the firework?
Well, no, it's for next year. They need to get Brad involved early, because Brad is the one, uh, actually Brad and Brad are both trained in fireworks displays.
Do you want me to call your assistant chief?
I would reach out to Chief Fokrin first.
Maybe Beth make a note. I think that would be like a newsworthy thing for the next newsletter about the social service aspect. You know, just give some example of, because that is a good service, and we do have an aging population, and, uh, you know, I just think that would be, uh.
I think Luke's starting to work on that already, so it'd be a good timing.
We have some social media, um, to call. Posts, yeah, posts that are coming out, and Dan Kupinsberger, our operations support technician, he's the one organizing that, so we hit you in contact with him, maybe you guys.
That would be perfect.
Even share that to start off with, and then go from there.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Deputy Sheriff.
Uh, how are you? Uh, I apologize that I, uh, left out here a little early at the last meeting, but you guys were having your executive session, so, um, but, uh, I'm glad to be back. Uh, not a whole lot, just, you know, the normal summertime stuff, speeders, uh, people shooting guns, things like that, not, not in your township, but it's throughout all of Franklin County, um, and I, uh, kind of play on his a little bit, uh, our undercover unit, Covert, has started a, uh, website to where, um, we are taking, uh, tips on, uh, at-risk youth and at-risk young adults, that if you think, um, that, you know, somebody, you're at a neighbor or something like that, it might be a risk for getting into crime or getting in a gang or something like that, or Covert, you need to like their help. An anonymous tip, it's just Covert, Franklin County, Ohio, and then you can just kind of fill out, it says, just ask for their name and implication and stuff like that, so, um, I can put that to Chief. I can, I can send that to you, if you want, uh, Sergeant Joe Green, our undercover unit, is the one in charge of it, and he's, um, setting, setting it up, so I can get you to finish on that, other than that, the fair's coming up. Next month.
Franklin County Fair?
Yes, sir.
It's always an early fair.
Yeah, well, end of July, or, yeah, total date to end of July, so, but they're always preparing our community relations guys.
It's not like the Cantor Fair in Monmouth County, the biggest county fair in Ohio, I just talked to somebody.
Always, always.
The biggest of the best.
Franklin County Fair usually gets overshadowed by the state fair, so I think that'll be.
When all human kinds started, you understand, for that. I always thought it was like over New Jersey somewhere.
Yeah, I can find out. I think, um, our man has been asked to go there, you know, for, uh, for, it's the last Sunday of the fair.
Yeah, I did want to take my friend, yes, I took the older one, to the one that was with us a couple of years.
I, I can find out for sure, I'll send it to you, but you guys, thank you.
Anything else? Anything else?
Nope, I'm sorry.
Perfect, thanks. Zoney.
Okay, zoning, um, old business, the Henderson Development, um, we have a zoning commission meeting scheduled for June eighteenth to six thirty PM for the zoning commission to review these submitted final plans that have been submitted. Um, have two couple of housekeeping things that we need to do tonight. First of all, the, the text of the overlay district process for submitting the final plans is to, is to be through an application for approval, which we don't have, and so Luke and I are creating one, um, from Prairie Townships, because they do have one. Um, secondly, there is a fee to be paid upon submission of this, and we don't have a set fee for this type of thing. And so I would like to, I did some research, and Prairie Township and others charge six hundred and fifty dollars for a review fee for this type of process, so I would like to entertain or have you guys entertain a motion that we set a fee for reviewing final plans submitted to us, that's six hundred and fifty dollars.
So I'm not opposed to that. I mean, is, is six fifty the average of our township?
Six fifty is low.
Six fifty is low.
I've seen a thousand.
Is Prairie the lowest, or?
Prairie is, yeah, they're, they're close to the lowest, yeah.
Okay. Six fifty is the same amount that we charge for, for Cher?
I didn't see Cher, Cher doesn't, doesn't publish.
The new bills, right, they're at six fifty.
So, so we do have a set fee of five hundred dollars for a review of a modification to a final plan. That's just a modification, and we have a set fee for that, and that's five hundred dollars. But through all the records, I can never find.
This is a review of?
This is a review of the entire plan, so.
Except that would be more than just that.
Which is, I mean, it's ours.
When are you, when are you and Luke gonna have that pulled together?
Wednesday. All, all he needs from me is the chapter and verse of the code that we're referred to.
Okay.
So, that's the application. So I had a conversation with the developer today, I explained to her, by the way, you know, we're already reviewing her plans, but the text calls for the, an application to be submitted, signed by the owner, and a fee to be paid, and.
This is the last thing that they have, right?
This is the last thing that they have.
For us.
For us.
But they have also submitted building permits for the county.
Now, I don't believe they have.
They don't think they have?
No.
Bobby already seems to think they have.
You think they have, for, for?
I'm not saying that they have.
For Henderson.
I'm saying Becker thinks that they have, so.
Well, that would surprise me.
Okay.
But I mean, that, that could be true.
First things first, let's, so this is for a review.
A final, for review of final plans submitted for approval for development.
For development, at six fifty, so moved. Second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the application will be ready by Wednesday. I already had a conversation with the, with the developer, and I said, there's, there's two things we have to do before our meeting, and I told her, we'll hold up the meeting, and, and I already told her the six fifty fee, she said she'll send us a check next week, and, and the application um, has to be signed and notarized by the owner of their property, which is not the same as the developer, but she said she will get the owner to sign and notarize the application.
So do we need to approve that, that process or that form? Or can it?
No, I don't believe so, because it, it's in the text for the, for, for the overlay that it, that it's required.
Okay.
So.
I've done the, I've done the forms before.
Okay.
Okay. So, based on all that, we plan to have our zoning commission meeting the, the eighteenth and six thirty, the developer will be here, um.
You see any problems with it?
The only problem I have is if I'm gonna have a quorum.
Oh, that.
Right now, I have a quorum.
Okay.
But I don't, I see problems with the, with the plans.
Okay.
As, as compared to the text for the overlay.
Okay.
So.
I'm sorry, did you vote on that?
Yes.
Thank you. I had emotions down, I didn't vote, so.
Okay, so that's it for Henderson.
Okay.
Um, Brookside, um, Beth helped me following minutes from the zoning commission meeting, which I can never find. Um, for the zoning commission meeting that was held in April of two thousand twenty-two, where the final development plans for Brookside cottages was approved. And so she found the minutes of that, which I never had any record of it ever occurring. Um, so we have that, and I have gotten, uh, Smiley has sent me the email that Pete Briggs sent to him in March of two thousand twenty-two. It said they had reviewed all of the, um, all of the.
Diversions.
Yeah, all of the, the diversions from the text, and Pete, okay, all of them. So we have legal authority that everything that, that, everything that they asked to divert from the original text was reviewed by Joe, Andy, and Pete and approved.
And you're comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
What's next?
I understand this has been a long process.
It's been a long process.
This predated COVID, it predated our agreement with Columbus and everything, so.
But what happened is, the records weren't kept very well. So, you know, I come in and I'm trying to find what happened.
Was it all in one file?
Well.
This was from way before COVID.
Yeah, okay, so.
Anyway.
Okay.
So right now, I'm waiting for a call back from, um, Curtis Ickeberry, the civil engineer, as to what he needs from us.
Okay.
And, and I don't have that answer yet. Um, Row to Pretend has to sign off on their plans when she gets back, whatever, that's all. And I think that's the last thing.
Yeah.
Um, chickens are gone. And I was there, took pictures, and, um, chickens, at least the chickens that we know about.
Right.
Currently, so that file has been closed.
Thank you for that.
Um, the variance request for the thirty-foot poles and netting, the variance hearing was last week, and the variance request was approved unanimously.
People gotta show up. Can't do everything.
We had three residents who all got letters about the meeting, who called or emailed and said, "We are opposed to this, but we want to remain anonymous." And I asked one of the three, "Would you come to the meeting and present?", and he said, "No." And then after the hearing, he called or emailed and said, "Well, why did anybody show up at your point? What do you want, you remain anonymous?"
Here's the thing, you, to, to actually get things done, you have to physically be part of local, you have to get yourself yourself up out of a chair, get in a car, come to a meeting, participate. We can't do it for everyone.
So.
So they got what they got.
They got what they got. The, they, the, every resident within two hundred feet of the property was notified, had a chance to come and present, did not, they chose to not. Um, there is a, an appeal period, which is forty-five days, thirty days. Thirty days from the date of the, the variance was.
To common pleas.
To common pleas, correct. Um, the variance itself doesn't act as a permit for the structure, so I instructed the owner to file an application for the structure for, as accessory structure, which he did. Our code says that you shall charge double if a project is started or completed before a permit is issued, so I charged double.
Okay.
He, he paid double, so the permit application is pending for me to approve. If I approve that pending permit application, I don't know if that supersedes the, the appeal process or not.
Is there a time period for you to do that?
There is not a, a time period.
I wait, let's figure out what the appeal, does, does, who makes it, does a resident appeal that?
A township resident.
Okay, so somebody would have to step up and say.
I believe it's thirty days from the date that the.
Right, that's what the original email said.
I would, would not do anything till after the appeal period.
That was my point.
And nothing happened.
We're probably like, four, about two weeks left. I think it happened about two weeks ago.
Yeah. Did it not happen last Wednesday? I'm trying to track it down.
Wasn't that two weeks ago?
Pretty sure it was, well, I've lost track of time a lot lately, but I'm pretty sure it was last week, because I was here, I came to.
It was, it was, I won't.
I don't win.
It was a rough week.
It was a rough.
It was a terribly rough week.
Oh, the other question I had about that was, there used to be, we always used to put a sign in front of the yard about a, a, a.
Yeah.
By asset, it's not, it's not in our code.
Contractors sign your term up.
No, 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 this is a zoning code, so, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, I can answer that, is, we used to have these great, like, behemoths, right? And if, if we, they were using sticky tape-type labels on it, and it was just a mess, it would rain and everything. Messed up, so I had checked with Jenner Pete ages ago, saying, asked if it was a requirement, and she said, no. Um, no, we can go back to that, but it's not required by code, especially when people within two hundred feet are being advised, be a letter, so.
That's another thing I want, the, does the person who wants to appeal this have to be within two hundred feet?
No.
No, it could be.
Any, any resident that can appeal.
Okay.
And if you remember, this was the Green Church, but it wasn't from the, didn't we make it the boundary? Because you can go from the center of the property, but to the bound, to the boundary, right?
Which is more. Right. You know. It is the boundary, every time I, every time I do that, I, I do the.
From the boundary, right?
So, and then, um, regarding the signs, I had a conversation with Jen Huber, who suggested nobody's doing that anymore. They're not, they're not required. Columbus, not gonna does it sometimes.
Or they do. Or they still does it.
Yeah, Jen, Jen says townships aren't, aren't using the signs anymore, because they're not required to.
I will tell you, I mean, with the period of time that I was overseeing the zoning, residents would gripe about them being in the yard. Okay, so I get it, but, but that's really just a board decision.
Speaking of signs, how long is a contractor's sign allowed to be up after the project's completed?
Zero. Once, once a project's completed, the sign has to, at the maximum, it's thirty days, regardless.
Right, but once the project's completed?
Thirty days. Correct.
I'm, I'm told there's a sign on Clubview near.
Okay. Yeah, is it a roofing sign?
I, I think.
Is that Sharon?
No, this one's not. The one, the one that was up there for weeks was Sharon, it, there was on the dividing line, and so I couldn't do anything about it, because it was Sharon. That's something, but the sign across the street, I think, is the one you're talking about, you know, roof, roofers, their job's one day. It's, it's up and down one day, while they leave their signs up for longer than that.
So what's the, are you talking about? You got a call regarding a sign on Clubview near Lookout?
Yeah.
And I don't know what it is.
I did, I know what it is.
Don't we have the ability to remove it?
You mean to show you my roof removed signs?
All right, yeah.
Well, you, so it's just signed it up for a long time?
No, it's, they'd be pulled apartment for the sign, it's been up for, uh, two weeks tops.
But the project's all done?
Roofing, roofings are one day.
Right, but I'm just saying, if the project was done two weeks ago, the sign should be gone.
I understand, yeah.
So wait, wait, wait a minute, what do you understand?
I understand that once the project's done, the, the sign should be gone, and I have the ability to pull the signs like I do when there's, where there's no permit.
So if it's a sign that I'm thinking of, I'm coming out of the gated community, I'm turning right towards Clubview, uh, south, okay, is it on the left?
No, if you, if you're headed west on Clubview, and you turn right on Clubview North, it's about the fourth house on your right.
Yes.
Yes.
And it says Franklin County Permit Approved?
No, I haven't seen that sign.
That's what threw me off, I thought that was Sharon.
The Worthington, um, roofing, whatever, isn't it?
Yeah, but it says underneath Franklin County Permit Approved.
He may do that, because none of the other contractors.
I understand that.
The Worthington Hills pull permits through Franklin County.
So here, not to belabor this, or you're, another two minutes went downhill. So that roofing job's over.
It is.
So just, yeah, well, the, the problem here.
Is what?
Is, he's been sitting in the office.
I have been doing, I have been.
PDA meetings and zoning commission meetings.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just asking when to get out.
Yeah.
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 To pull it.
Yeah, and I think that's what, that's what he's saying, is like, yeah, he's gonna pull it, he just hasn't had time to pull it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, oh, perfect, yeah, I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, it's on the same page.
I just drive right up there and pull it right now.
Okay, um. So, on the, on the golf netting, the, uh, permit will not be issued until the appeal period has, has been satisfied. Um, we have, you guys have it for you, and in the box, you have a resolution to, again, declare fifty-six twenty-two Riverside Drive a nuisance. This time, I have included in the resolution the crumbling wall along the road that was hit and damaged. Not the entire wall, but the wall that was to the right of the driveway, um, which has, you know, has been knocked down ninety percent. Um, the, uh, resolution includes that, which means when we enforce the resolution, we can have that bulldozed and cleared out of there. Um, what the resolution does not include is the vehicle, because standards for the vehicle are such that it has to either be missing an engine, missing a transmission, or missing wheels. It has to be that inoperable to declare it a nuisance under code. So at this point.
Code requires that? Not our code.
Ohio revise.
Ohio revise.
Wow. And it has none of those, no, so I can't include the vehicle at this time.
So it missed a, a tire?
The tires are almost flat, and it, somebody, you know, told me it was harboring wildlife, and I went out there to take pictures to see if there's harboring wildlife, I didn't find evidence of that. But right now, we can't do anything through this resolution for the vehicle.
So just out of my personal curiosity, when you say, literally, the tires have to be missing, not just fully flat?
No, missing.
Missing.
Engine, transmission, wheels, missing.
Can we take care of that?
The, uh.
Get somebody from Youngstown?
The homeowner has ghosted me, you know, the homeowner does not respond to any, any emails from me whatsoever.
That's fine.
So.
One thing at a time.
Okay, so there is the resolution.
Okay, uh, Chairman, I move, oh, you, Andy, you wanna do that one? I'm sorry, I was ahead here. Um, I moved to, uh, approve the resolution of clearing property owned by Andrew, how do you, what's that last name again?
Catapano.
Catapano, and Marissa Catapano located at five sixty-two Riverside Drive, up on Ohio, four three oh one six seven. Act parcel two one two zero zero one two seven four, Perry County, different, on the Ohio, and this is.
Same.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, um, so, next step on that is a certified letter, something I wanted to be telling him that the property was declared a nuisance and giving him five days to fix the property, as the resolution says, so that letter will go out Wednesday. Um, new business, we have a new variance request for detached garage on Henderson Road. Um, and we have a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting scheduled for June twenty-fifth, Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, Tuesday at six thirty. Um, variance is required for this detached garage, because our code treats detached garages as accessory structures, which says they can't be closer than twenty feet from the house, which therefore, we're gonna talk about that next. Um, it's also going beside the house instead of the, on the house, and it's gonna encroach into a no-build zone on Henderson Road. So those are the three things that the, the Board of Zoning Appeals is gonna look at on that. Otherwise, it's a nice two-car detached garage that would fit and, and work well on the property, in my opinion.
Uh, I'm sorry, which house is this on?
It's, it's the one on the corner of, of Henderson Heights and Henderson Road.
Which one?
If, if you're facing north, the one on the right.
Oh, that one.
So it's that one.
There one time.
What's that?
Oh, we had a fence issue there one time.
Yeah.
It's at thirty-seven hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is not the same person, though.
Okay, different person, okay.
Yeah. Um, zoning code updates, um, before we print the revised zoning code, uh, Beth and Jen and I are gonna work on changing our requirements for detached garages, or modifying them to where they don't have to be twenty feet from the principal residence. And in addition to that, we're gonna talk about, it's, and it's not the number of sheds on large lots, it's, we have a. It's and it's not the number of sheds on large lots. It's we have a five hundred seventy-six maximum square footage of accessory structures. Allowed in Perry Township. Some lots are so big that that's a very minimal number, so we wanna revise that. To have it on a sliding scale depending on the square footage of the lot.
So like a percentage of the.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Can I say just leave the way and let them go through a zoning variance to to. To approve it instead of us changing the code. I get it, I understand, I'm with it. But instead of changing your code, let everybody, and then it's a property by property.
Yeah.
Basis.
Yeah.
That you guys, and then it allows the it allows them to do it. I I just.
I I don't, I don't disagree with that, and and the reason I don't disagree with that at all is because we've only had two, you know, two, two years I've been here.
Right, and that's sort of my vibe, like I.
We don't have that many lots that can have it.
Right, I agree, but I think it, I think it just needs to be a.
Just left.
Just left and and deal with it on property, because then we we get to see what's going on and instead of trying to, you know, change the code to accommodate the what ifs. It's like, if somebody wants to do it closer. Then by all means, I mean, we could do that, but it's just, I think you just gotta have your. Your set.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I do.
So.
So.
Because in some instances, we may want it to be that, and but it just gives us a certain sense of control over it.
I mean, we we are going to change the code to redefine detached carriages and and redefine the criteria for those.
Yeah.
But we won't mess with the square footage, maximum square.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, it's it it it's a good catchall. It's not like, you know, and we did, we caught it, you know, we caught it. We had a guy, you know, trying to build a basketball court, and it wasn't a basketball court, it was a patio. Well, he was claiming it's a patio, but it was really a basketball, but it gave us the ability to, you know.
Yeah.
So that's just my opinion.
I'm in agreement. So. Um. I think that's it.
Oh, sure, a question from a neighbor. Do you know how to have car covers on cars outside?
Yes. It has to be a car cover designed for the cars. For the car that it fits.
So no blue cars?
No blue tars.
With bunch of cords.
It has to be.
Yeah, that's your sound stuff.
I'm circling the green.
That's Youngstown stuff.
I feel like that's broken.
Would we be allowed to prohibit, would 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 we be allowed to prohibit car covers?
We we have to change the code.
Right.
But in in the code, it is is allowed.
Is there an issue with?
Covers with bunch of cords.
What, what?
Like if it's truly intended, not a.
Yeah, like.
Rigged cover.
Somebody made a complaint.
Park Ridge Court?
Far as Park Ridge Court, as part always parking their driveway as a car cover.
Park Ridge Court? Oh. Now think about it.
I was thinking on his truck. Very nice car.
Park Ridge Court. I don't have any idea what it is.
It's nice car.
Is that the, what you're talking about?
I don't even know where it is, I just.
I think where it is.
I. Park Ridge?
Park Ridge Court.
Park Ridge Court.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that fall under the same kind of deal with the RVs? You know, it's like.
You care what?
Like our RVs.
You could cover it for seven days, I don't mean.
You know what I'm saying, you know what I'm saying. It's like if you're storing it and it's not a you, like, it's not a car, wouldn't that be kind of under the same thing as like the RV? You know, it's like. You can have it there, but it's like if you're gonna store it there, you might as well go store it some other place, but.
Well, we have the same issue. That it's being stored there and not ever moved, or is the issue the car cover?
I think the issue is the car cover.
Yeah, I mean, it looks at the look of the car. Again, it's it's like if they, if you're just putting it there, never moving it and isn't it kind of like your RV? So.
Could they?
And they also had another question.
I kind of remember this from.
You wonder why I'm spending all my time at the desk? You wanted to be.
Did we have something in our zoning code about like commercial vehicles parked in a. Wasn't that an issue like on ION?
Yeah, we do.
We do, and I just, I don't.
And and there's a definition in the code of a of a commercial vehicle.
Yes. It's well defined.
It involves.
What is, what is a commercial vehicle?
I would have some.
Well, first of all, it has. First of all, it has to be if there is rack on top. If it's signage on the side. And there's one more thing, either weight or number of.
Number of.
Rattles or something. When somebody had a car that looked like a nationwide company car, but had all kinds of nationwide logos all over it, that's probably a lot, isn't it?
I would think that's a lot.
I mean, we have one on one of the streets, like a Columbia Gas, you know, something, and it's just their work.
Yeah, that's just their work.
Yeah, it'd be just like.
That's what I thought, but I thought you can't have like some big truck out there.
Correct.
Right.
That's the last one I wanna ask about, I got a question about that, is for somebody who has a relative who maybe every other month spends a couple of days at his parents' house. He has an eighteen wheeler, but he just brings up the.
The truck.
Are they allowed to do that?
I would not think so.
It's got ten wheels on the cab.
Correct.
Right, and they park it there for usually on the street for three or four days.
I don't think you can. You just have to double check the code.
Have you seen what I'm talking about?
I would think no.
Good.
I think I'd be.
That would be something that.
Right, those are all mine.
Are you sure? You're living your old record here, by the way.
We don't have chickens, we got pork.
Wish my biggest issue was a car cover, I gotta say.
Sure, we did.
It doesn't bring rats.
Zone rest.
Somebody needs to rest, is that what you're saying?
Road department, anything from. Absentee.
Well, we're supposed to have somebody from Salt Bar, what happened?
Yeah, I had that, I'm Nate reached out to, I said that they've been waiting for, the plan was for Ian to return first, but the drawings are currently in progress. The contractor's coordinating with all the subcontractors, um they're supposed to meet, the plan is to meet with Ian after the fifth to review demolition schedule and discuss lay down areas. Um. I'll follow up um when he gets more information.
Could we, this Andy's kind of coordinating this. Could we get a, could we get a meeting with them and Andy and Ian, just so we cut up the speed, buying this back? That's that week. That week. Just be a a Zoom call or something.
Yeah.
Okay. I keep looking back there and saying, there's Salt Bar.
Yeah, well, he's he's not due back on until the tenth, so.
Okay.
Correct. And um the other thing I just wanted to know, we talked about having a separate meeting. For folks to discuss the traffic calming, we, do you have a chance to get that set up yet? Um, I wanted to see what availability is here for folks, so I've got dates that are available. For the school. Um, I'm looking at Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. To avoid weekends, so June third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. July ninth, tenth, or eleventh. Or sixteen, seventeenth, and eighteenth, anybody taking time off, downtown?
I'm sorry, say that again, I apologize.
June twenty-third, twenty-fourth, or twenty-fifth. And then jump a couple of weeks past the holiday, ninth, tenth, or eleventh.
Is that just the twenty-third or Sunday?
Oh, I think so.
Yeah, twenty-third is.
Right on the wrong dates.
Your perfect thing, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Or twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
There you go.
Oh, let's see here, I wrote it down, I'm probably looking at that one. Um. Yeah, I'm sorry, twenty-fifth, twenty-six, twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Or then jumping to July ninth, tenth, or eleventh. Sixteenth, seventeenth, or eighteenth.
That'll work for me.
Anything not work, I guess, is my ask here.
Uh, July dates, July ninth and tenth are bad.
Okay.
What's the other one?
Eleven, the July eleventh or sixteen, seventeenth, or eighteen?
Eleventh is okay.
Okay.
Then June?
Um, July sixteen, seventeen, eighteen?
Oh, the twenty-seventh, not good for me, sorry.
Okay.
So what days are good?
I'm whittling that down here.
The seventh.
Sixteen, seventeenth, eighteen of July?
Sixteen's bad.
Okay.
Eighteen's bad.
Okay.
So I have two good days, right?
So July eleventh or seventeenth, or then skipping back to June. We're looking at twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, or twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh is bad.
And you said twenty-seventh is bad, okay. What about twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth?
Or it feels bad, twenty-sixth is bad, twenty-seventh.
Okay, so we're looking at July eleventh or seventeenth. So and part of that depends on on the school's ability to get somebody to come in, you know, since the school's closed, so I'll get back to you with.
Okay.
That is.
I'll go in seven. Anything else on the road? Fire EMS?
Uh, City Worthington responded to Perry Township twenty-six times in the month of May. Couple Arlington responded ten times in the month of May.
Police?
Uh, Unrolled Business, our conditional offer, um our candidate is going through the process, he's going through the final stages, he's actually out of town for a few days, and I think he'll be back next week. And then he will finish the uh process. So thus far, no issues. Um, one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was the transient vendor stickers. Um, thanks to Luke, one of the things we looked at was the current sticker and one of the suggestions between Beth and Luke and I had talked about was. Um, putting the non-emergency number on the sticker. For to report violation or questions, and then we came up with the idea of doing a QR code on front. With also an email link in case somebody doesn't know how to do that, that would go to our webpage that says, here's how you go about this. If you wanna file a complaint, here's the number you called.
Is that sticker the same size as the other one?
Yes, we're actually gonna do the exact same sticker, except add the QR code, phone number.
I think the new one looks fine.
So the question is, does anybody know where those stickers came from? Because we don't remember where they came from.
Oh, who made them?
Yeah.
I, let me look back, because I I'm the one that ordered them.
Oh, okay.
Been a long time, but we'll look back and see if I can remember where I got this.
Okay. So if if you're good with those stickers, then we will look to order those.
I'm hoping a mystery.
Yeah, I, you can get them from Fishtoprint or whatever.
Yeah.
And hey, Beth, if you need help with the artwork to upload, like Fishtoprint or something like that.
Oh, you need to take care of that then?
Yeah, just I just need the artwork and I can I can upload the artwork and however many we wanna order.
Perfect.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
And usually you can get like a, if you're a first time user on Fishtoprint, you can get like sixty percent off your order, so pretty cheap.
We we do on the calendars too.
Uh, they just came in.
Are they July just to January, you said?
Yeah, well, yeah, to the end of December, and then we'll be on regular calendar year after that, but it's. Yeah, they're done, the folks are starting to get them now, so we'll have some for Fourth of July for folks to pass out.
Anything else on the police?
Uh, yes, uh, one thing you wanna talk about, our police levy that's coming up in November, if there's any thoughts of maybe doing some uh meetings around the township, uh. The concern is making sure there's no confusion between the spring and the fall, and people that vote for it in the spring think that they're voting for second one in the fall. So I have been working on a PowerPoint to make sure that we don't um. Do anything or say anything we're not supposed to during levies time, and I borrowed from another township that used it, so.
Right.
Then, you know, it's gotta be truthful, factual, and verifiable, so I fear we could kinda.
Who's doing that though?
What's that?
Well, the, I think the chief out there did that, right?
Yeah, but he wasn't allowed to answer questions.
Right, but that was what was nice is it kept them straight to the PowerPoint, but I did check with Becky and she said that that's fine.
The what?
Um. To do this. Yeah, I mean, you guys could do it too for that matter, but the 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 thing is you have to stick to what's on the slide.
What's on them?
And and I asked, well, could someone from the levy committee be here? And she says that's fine, but she would highly recommend that no questions and answers during that period of time. If people had questions, they could email the levy committee separately and outside of it.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you a presentation, don't ask me.
Don't ask any questions.
But.
I guarantee an opinion.
But there's like the levy committee.
Don't bite.
They could uh.
Well, I don't, I don't fly my flag outside anything.
The the thing is, can we do a couple of meetings, whether it be trustees meeting, or meeting, whatever, at in different location around the township and send it out? Because one of the things I think we should do is like the mailers is on levy information, because the mailer reaches everybody. It's kind of like if you look at the turnout we had for the special improvement district for Larkstown, how many folks showed up because they received the letter? I think that reaches more people than.
It's true, it's true, I mean.
Just stay.
I think the challenging part, and I and I'm just thinking optics, the challenging part of having meetings scheduled around where we're not allowed to speak. That's the part that makes me uncomfortable, like if we're not allowed to talk to. Well, here's your question. Well, we can, you can, like, for example, so our biggest concern, and and this comes a lot because how the road levies were one year after the other. I would get calls on the second rep levy scene, I just, I just voted for this, why am I not gonna do that? So so and you, everybody knows that you're gonna have far fewer people called to verify than you are the people that's actually gonna verify. So our concern is, especially since what, over thirteen hundred people went ahead and voted for it anyway? Um, obviously couldn't get, that we're gonna get it in November, and you're gonna have a group of people says, I'm not doing this again, I just did it. Oh, no, I totally get it, I I'm just trying to figure out how to be handled. That.
I need call.
Well, she's. I mean, the other thing you do, it's just an individual session, but it just save that, hey, under the current rules, we can't.
No, but I can add.
Yes, we just can't, but we feel it's very important to to talk, so if you do it all after him, I don't see.
Some of the, some of the feedback, I got from a few residents, there's a lot of confusion.
Right.
Among one in the spring and then one kind of in November, well, some people understand it, but some.
Can we do it at your club and can we do it at both Brookside and uh and then do it at Clubhouse, Henderson or down at.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Yeah.
I um, I don't have probably do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you hear that? A little conversation's going on here, so I was just saying, like, why don't we just have one at. Uh, Worthington Hills, one at Brookside, one at Epcun Clubhouse. And then just just say, look, it's informational, we're getting a lot of questions, but understand that underneath, under the new law, there's not a, it's just, we we're just getting information out. But there's not a lot of questions and answers, I mean, just be upfront, then just say it's it, but if you have more questions, there's a levy, there's a levy. That's to talk and get more specifics, so.
Yeah, and one of the things.
You wanna do that?
Will be available after the meeting in in the parking.
In the parking.
Uh, big signs for.
Yeah, you wanna do that in conjunction, or you wanna do it as a standalone, do you wanna do a conjunction with something?
I just think we just pick dates and just do, you know, where we can all show up. We do the PowerPoint slide, we do that, and then kind of tell everybody, hey, if you wanna be part of the levy group.
I think that deserves, I think that deserves a standalone.
I agree.
Special meaning.
Yeah.
And you never know if people are gonna show up or if they're not gonna show up, I mean, it may.
Well, they know there's just one thing on the agenda, like we did the standalone for, you know, the other day.
Yeah.
And and when do you want to do that?
Well. Well.
People don't start thinking about it, so.
No, but that depends on you, because.
Actually, probably October.
It because what I'm putting into PowerPoint is to break down whatever the mills and everything that's decided and what it helps do and so forth. So what I've done now is taken what the other township used and tweaking it to us with Luke's help. Once we can get done, if we're sending out to everybody, then everybody can say, hey, I like this, don't like this, change this, add this.
Well, and the good news is if we do it in September, but then you got people that are done with vacations.
Well, actually, figure out the day where uh. Right in and all that.
You'd work your way back.
And then work your way back like a week or two from that.
Yes.
You know, well, you know. Some people do abs- absentee.
Oh, yeah.
So let's just do this maybe like a week before.
Okay.
Cause I think they I think they come out almost thirty days before lunch, right?
Yeah, I think it is.
So, you know, so I think we would look at the very beginning of October.
Yeah.
Very end of September.
Okay.
But we can't have the levy committee there.
We can't have at least one person, I asked if we could have a representative from the levy committee. To say what they want to say, since they can speak more freely, but she just said yes, but the caveat was I would recommend. No question and answer. Um and I guess my thought was it's so easy to get pulled into a conversation once it gets started. So it would be better just to. Stop it, but I I think this is gonna be really important, because there's so many people that. As much information as we sent out about the second road levy, year after year after year, so many people had no.
Yeah, I mean, we did an E blast and so forth for the spring levy, it's still cast, so what do you do? I'm sorry.
But why don't we just do it Wednesday, 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 like midweek? I don't think there's a lot of sports going on on Wednesdays, um right? So what we could do is. Just start like the third September, the third Wednesday or the. Second to last Wednesday and then just go back, just do it Wednesday, Wednesday, Wednesday.
We'll need to pick those days relatively soon, so I can make sure to get the schools. If we wanna hit the timing instead of three weeks ahead, do we wanna just bite the bullet and do a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in one week?
Schools, but schools may have functions after, because. But we do it at the country club, which we should.
Well, that's a good point, I mean, you may wanna ask the schools, you wanna get as many.
I figure out what the dates are, and then.
So then we could do October.
Well, first first pick pick the the absentee ballot, when that starts, and then work your way back.
Alright. Uh the last thing I have is uh during our process to replace Sergeant Ashley. Um we had a process with four applicants, our top two, number one is as soon as going through the process. The our board, um that ranked everybody, uh I agree with the recommendation is to offer the number two person. A reserve spot, if we hire our two next year, then those two are already here, we don't have to do this process all over again next year. So um I would ask for consideration for a motion for a um conditional off. Offer to Josh Abshire. Uh he will need to do the full process with uh CBSA psychological and physical.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, yeah, let's go.
The second one is, uh not sure many people are familiar, but Detective Darren Smith from Powell has retired. He is now the chief bailiff at Delaware County, and he would like to come here as a reserve. Uh he understands the requirements and what's expected, um however, under the how collaborative, I do not need to do a. CBSA psychological and physical for him, um Detective Mills has already done a background, he's filled out his paperwork. So I asked for a motion to proceed to hire Detective Smith as a reserve.
I'll make that motion. Uh second vote, yes, yes. I'd have administered it.
Alrighty, um. I know we have a meeting coming up regarding the ODOT in sixty one. Which I did not jot that date down. Um see. Conversations are still going ongoing about that, to see. What's gonna be acceptable and what isn't. Um would like to kind of try and regroup at some point relatively soon about the Dublin building systems. And uh oh, one question I did have is um the gentleman over there said that he would be willing to do. An assessment of um the property just east of us for free. Those two parcels, Smokey and. Um Dublin Building Systems, and I checked with legal counsel and said that. Just so you guys could get a gist of what that size property would would work. No, it doesn't cost anything, it would be good to go.
But good question, are we gonna figure out what? Based on the numbers of Dublin Building Systems, are we gonna are we gonna look into like what from a financing standpoint and what that would mean from a? Yeah, 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 like.
Yeah, I have a meeting set up. I think it's early next week.
Cause there there's really no sense in engaging and doing anything until we figure out what, you know, what we're looking at from, I mean, what we would have to do. And if we're all comfortable with that number. And then if we're comfortable with it and everybody's. Then then I think we can start moving down the process, but to do any work without understanding what, you know, what a. Bond or levy or whatever that would entail, um. You know, I mean, I know everybody.
Additional to.
Right.
We're not incurring any more money really, right, not getting a little bit more information, yes.
Right, no, I'm I'm just saying like, but we got the numbers and I'm just saying let's look at the, you know. Good, better, best, and what that means from a from a levy standpoint or a bond or how we're gonna finance it and then. Make a decision. Cause we're just, we're just kind of doing this and then it's like, you know, but at at the end of the day, it all comes down to numbers. You know, it all comes down to what is this going, you know, what are we comfortable with? And how are we gonna pay for it?
From a. And if the levy perspective, can can the auditor figure that out for us?
The value, right, and we assume or the estimates, I should say.
Yeah.
I mean, we can even look at the calculations that we did for the police levy.
This is a little different, cause don't you do this like over time period?
Revenue numbers that we used for the police lobby, that we can figure out what that. Waits to.
Doesn't lots of time do this? Guy that we've had here before?
Well, that's who I'm meeting with.
Oh, well, then what what are we talking about?
I don't know.
No, I was just saying, like, without me with that, I mean, that guy has nothing to do with it, like, what I'm saying is just. Look at what is this cost from a levy standpoint or however.
This started out like in a renovation of like.
The finance guy is the one. You're thinking rich, is that you're thinking?
No, I'm just I'm just saying like very simply, we can, like, I called my. The guy from FC Bank, I mean, we just did Huntington Bank, it was a conventional loan, you know, over thirty years, you know, what are we, you know, what are we talking about, and then. The the other thing, or if if we're meeting with that guy and that guy's gonna help, then what what's his cost on all of this?
This is a gentleman that was in here before, and he said he doesn't get a dime unless. The levy or bond is.
Right, and what what does he get paid?
Well, we need to figure out everything else first.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is like, you know, just let's figure out what we're dealing with, go figure out what the numbers are and.
Have a good meeting.
Oh. Um, okay, so, um. We haven't heard anything new on Mount Carmel other than July first, we should be able to start accessing the property off of. And this shuts down as a. And this shall. Yeah. Um I did again make it very clear to Mr. Levon that there's that outstanding.
He shut down altogether or just right in, right out?
It shuts down altogether. Cut down all the trees on here, which makes it easy for me to see.
You think our signage figured out for that?
No, it's what it's been approved by the city of Dublin, but. Yeah, but I think it's on us to pay for it.
It is.
So.
I forget what that looks like, I forget what that.
Yeah.
I can figure it back out, Jones, in the team.
Is that lit at all too?
I don't believe so.
Because, you know, our meetings in the winter are dark at. Six o'clock when our meetings.
Well, I I think you're gonna have streetlights and everything like that out there, so. But if we gotta get, I mean.
Carmel's gonna be where?
And do we need to get?
We probably need to refresh estimates anyway, right?
I don't even think we had estimates. I think we just had.
I'm gonna say that kind of sneaks up on me, it's a brand new entrance. It's not super well lit back there right now.
I can get it.
It's pitch dark in our meetings from November to like February.
Well, we'll find out what we can, what we can't do, but yeah, if you, I can go get estimates on. For on sign companies of what it's gonna cost to do that, so if somebody can send me that.
Yeah, I'll track it down.
Well, it all started with the zoning question.
Um so it's time to um renew the O-Tama. Okay, so it's time to uh renew O-Tama property and liability, um now we'll get a calculation where the guy end up giving us some money back here. As always, but the coverage period is June first, twenty twenty four, and we thirty first, twenty twenty five. Um and the amount is sixty five thousand five hundred twenty one dollars.
I'll make the uh motion that we pay O-Tama that amount for coverage for uh. June the twenty fourth to the end of May of twenty twenty five.
Uh second.
Vote.
Yes.
That looks like my finger dropped off of here, um so the. Worthington um Hills Country Club Golf Course. Pay in an assessment for all the energy improvements that happened, I just need an. Approval to um authorize the semi annual payment.
Uh second.
Vote.
Yes.
Um with the Brookshead Community Garage Sale coming up, we need a motion to waive permanent application fees. For the Brookside Community Garage Sales.
I like that motion.
Second. Vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And um it's not on here, but if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to go ahead and give the permanent application wait for the Worthington Hills. I mean, the garage sale as well.
I I'm going to uh. Waive the permanent application fees for the garage sale for Worthington Hills. Well, the one we had.
Then that already happened.
It was it was last month.
Okay, that's fine.
We did charge him, right?
Oh, yeah, I charged him.
No, we just usually, this is the first time I see it separate. That's fine, I we may have actually voted to waive both at the time.
Worthington Hills was the first Saturday night.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We go down to one meeting.
And there you go, I'm done. Given that I was tardy and missed my opportunity to say anything for the Brookside um piece, or just the garage sale is this weekend, Saturday, nine to three. Um and then Sunday is the neighborhood recycle day, residents have been reminded that items have to then be removed from. The curb after Sunday, and then we have a Volunteers of America truck, community units out to school on Monday. From nine thirty to twelve thirty to pick up donations, so.
Any updates on the hog race for Easter?
Not yet, no, but I think the Easter egg has passed.
I'm sure preparations are ready for next year.
So, anyway. Keith, I will tell you that I was again, I was very clear that folks can't leave items out of the curb until garbage pickup and all of that stuff, so. If they tell you differently, it's not true. Um request a motion for approval of payroll and disbursements.
I'll make that motion, second. Vote, yes.
Yes, yeah.
I had a better hundred dollars.